Oh, and maybe that people fight for.
You should probably speak up whoever's talking.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Much better.
There we go. Um, this moving forward, I don't have any announcements to make for the council or the people standing off. Um, at least speaking for the city. Um, so what we'll do is we'll just go down the line of counselors and work through the issues that way. So. Does any council members want to start the meeting off?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I got it. I got it Gilbert. I got it Gilbert.
Now you gotta run through and go get there first.
Wow.
No, I'm not running. I'm not. I'm not doing physical fitness. I'm fine. Okay. Uh, Ashley Williams, so a councilman, DA, fish person, I don't know. Um. Yeah, so there's uh, not much to uh, announce from my neck of the woods. Uh, I just wanted to let the general public know that, yeah, the, we're gonna have probably elections for, uh, I think three council seats coming up in two weeks. Um, so if you're interested in, you know, the little chairs to his big chair, um, uh, yeah, just uh, get yourself prepped for that, you know, never too early to start a council, getting your name out there. Cause you know, I'm pretty sure Mr. Falcon might wanna get back on there too. Just, just letting him know.
Yeah.
What do you mean no? Sir, what do you mean no? Like he can put his name back on there.
Oh wait, Billy say no?
No, you're saying no for him. Billy, does he, does he speak for you?
Uh, he certainly does not speak for me.
Okay.
I do all that myself and enough. That is very true. And he has a record to stand on.
Way too much.
Yeah, that's true. Billy's a man of people apparently. Uh, but other than that, uh, I've reached out to actually a fellow council member who's not here, Barry McCochner, um, about like some fishing stuff, but like that's. I, I think, uh, unfortunately DOA, but we'll see how it goes. Uh, but yeah, I have nothing else to report going forward other than, uh, actually I'd like to hear from, uh, Dr. Gilbert Brown on, on his own level as a councilman, but also as a member of the BBB and how he's seeing, um. Uh, registration for businesses coming. I'm just curious about that.
Uh, the council should be concerned about that. That's, that's one thing the council will probably be confronted with quite often.
Yeah, anyway, um, so that's all I got.
Okay. Do the, anyone in the council have any questions for the councilman?
Nah, no one's got questions for me. Nah, let's move on.
Uh, what about the, what about the people? Does the people have any questions for Mr. Williams?
No, no one's got any questions for me. These people just know what I'm about, about nothing.
Is he getting his ass kicked enough?
Bad about nothing. Can't, can't speak to that, I guess.
Oh.
If that'd be something. Alright.
But nothing is something.
Nothing is something, that's true.
This storm could calm them off.
Alright, uh, councilmember Dr. Gilbert Brown, I apologize for my not being here last week. Uh, couple things.
Apologize to them too. You had apologized to them too. You apologized to us.
Yeah, I do, I do apologize to everybody.
I don't give a fuck.
I don't give a fuck. We don't care.
I am shouting, yes.
I wasn't here last week, but I care.
Do I not sound like I'm shouting?
No, not to me. Well, that's alright. Don't worry about it.
Well, there is a storm outside, so.
Voice of a storm is mighty, mighty loud.
Voice of nature, I didn't get that.
Alright, so, uh, on my list of things I've done, uh, so I've been working again with BBB as a member, uh. We did lower taxes just to remind everybody if haven't heard yet, instead of the five hundred dollars every two weeks, it's now down to fifty dollars every two weeks. So yay for that.
Yeah, I'll say yeah.
Uh, those taxes are not going to be, uh, collected until March. So I believe March, either fifteenth and the thirtieth, I believe, are gonna be the two collection dates. Uh, getting a business license is still five hundred dollars. So if anyone has any businesses they want to, uh, create or purchase, please find myself or another member of the BBB. And we can help you with that. Um, you, you said you had a, or I guess you could ask questions later on this, but, um. Yes, reg, people are registering businesses still. New businesses are kind of being put, uh, like I'm helping get them established, but they're not gonna be officially registered and licensed until the new till system comes in, just so we can properly, uh, exchange things out, uh, make it a lot easier on everyone.
Yeah, and that's been clearly, has that been clearly stated to the business owners so they know that this, uh, first stage wasn't just, wasn't registration, it was just to kind of fill it out in the registrations or?
Yes, this, this first stage was mainly a, well, it is like the registration, so everyone has their license. But it's mainly to determine which businesses are still active, which ones are not.
Take, take the temperature.
Ex- exactly.
Yeah, yeah, put, put a thermometer in the city's ass, I get you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Or somewhere else, counselor.
I mean, that's where you take your doc, is that where your doctors, do you take temperatures?
Under the tongue as well, the armpit, you know, I have to talk about that. Anyways, moving on.
Same.
Any, anyways, um, other things, so I have started assisting with the, uh, tourism and new people to the city. Um, initiative, trying to help gather information to put into a document that can be given to everyone when they first, um, come into the city. A sort of a basics of where everything is at, explaining some of the laws, things like that, everything they need to know. Uh, sort of in parallel to that, something that I'm starting to work on is the workforce development and education initiative. Which is basically, um, working on a initiative in which we're, we can have people who are experts take on like apprentices in different fields in order to help train people in how to do different, uh, jobs around the city, whether that is in the government, hospital, or something simply as construction or logging. Uh, a lot more to be done with that, just wanna announce that, that is something that I'm working on. Um, let's see here.
Kinda work on that acronym though, that acronym's terrible.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna come up with something.
I can barely hear.
It's, we said, yeah, something.
Well, it's like the workforce development, education initiative, but I'll, I'll work on something better. That's just, you know, first draft.
Okay. Yeah, well.
But, uh, yeah, I think that's pretty much everything.
Um, for the BBB, if you don't mind me asking, what made you guys reconsider at least the, the fee as the, or the tax, uh, burden on the businesses?
I'll be honest and just say I hated it personally. Then did not want that, but, um, no, it, it's, it's one of those things where we wanna promote small businesses and have them flourish. And if they have to worry about paying a thousand dollars every month, you know, that's, if not, you know, more than their income.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's just a ludicrous amount of money. So, you know, it's just beneficial to everyone to have more money in their business that they can invest in and, and pay their employees. Rather than us getting the money in order to finance their employees for them.
And, and I understand that you're not the catalyst and the driving force of most of these decisions and whatnot, but I'm, as I was saddened to hear that.
Just a stormtrooper.
Well, maybe, maybe, yeah, right against that analogy. Um, as I was a little sad about the executive order being removed for the small businesses, I'm glad to see that BBB has decided to lower its, uh, tax burden on the businesses. I'm sure the citizens of Los Santos would agree.
Alright.
Alright.
Yeah, any other, uh, questions, comments for me, for anyone?
Any more questions to the council? Oh, I got, yeah, yeah, I got, um, uh, how many businesses do you have registered at this point?
Um.
Give me a rough number, I don't need to think exact.
We probably have currently at least tw, probably twenty businesses who have paid for their new license. Another fifteen on top of that that have to pay still, at least fifteen. Then there's, I went around the city and, uh, basically went to every single business to check in on everything, and I think there's currently thirty or forty businesses that are likely going to be foreclosed.
Okay.
So there are places that people aren't interested in purchasing, they might become available.
Okay.
And I'm gonna guess you're gonna recommend that, uh, business owners probably don't purchase, uh, businesses currently until the new till system comes in, or are you encouraging them to buy the, buy it now? Or, and then wait for the new thing to come through? What, what, what's your?
Personally, I would continue business as usual, purchase the place if it has been foreclosed and it is available to purchase, so that way it's in your name. Then send a letter out to the BBB in order to say that I purchased this business, here's the, you know, address and owners, partners, everything like that. And so that way we at least have it on paper that you're the one who purchased it, so that way, when, you know, it, it, so we, we have a paper trail.
Okay, yep. Um, the, the only other final question I've got for you, doctor, is, um, uh, well, I guess not practicing doctor, not practicing doctor, doctor. Um, is, do you know what the price points are gonna be for these new till systems for people that don't, that have registered, that want to set up new till systems?
That I am not sure of at the moment, so.
Have you guys had conversations yet about the price points?
There have been some very early discussion about it, but not, nothing that I would wanna give out any.
Okay.
You know, where we're at currently.
And what about, um, government institutions that might require a registered to collect either fees, fines, or something like that outside of PD? And I don't mean it like, uh, fines that have judicial meaning or anything like that.
You mean like, like a billing system?
Yeah, similar to that, I guess, something like that, yeah. And with government agencies, like the law or DOJ as an example, or, you know, um, I, you know, I don't know.
I think that, yeah, I, I think that's something that we can.
Department of Wildlife and Fishery.
There you go, I guess.
I, I think that is something that we could set up, but again, uh, I, I still need to, you know, look into a lot this more.
Alright.
Personally.
Alright. Alright, and I just wanna remind everyone in, in attendance here, if you have something to say, clearly you can surely get up to the, uh, council or come up to the podium and speak so everyone can hear you.
I can get up and don't call me Shirley.
Uh, you can surely get up if you wanted to, Chief Justice, I've seen you walk, and if you wanted me to call you Shirley, surely I would. Uh, but moving on. So for, yeah, I wanted to consider some of those aspects of government buildings and, and whatnot to, um, be considered for those things, cause we're definitely need to set up some type of systems to support the city.
Yes, exactly.
Do the council members have any other questions?
Not that.
No? Alright, do the people have any more questions?
Oh, I have some questions.
Oh, I have some questions.
Well, I'm sure as lucky as he is to answer your, answer them, he'll be obliged to answer them.
Excellent. Dr. Brown, um, the.
Not practicing doctor though.
Sorry, the, the sort of doctor, half doctor? What are you, what are you, step doctor? What are you doing, step doctor? Like is that your step doctor, right?
He still retains the title.
I still have the title, like, I, I can practice if I want to, I just.
But you're not practicing though.
Have you ever, have you ever considered going pro?
Going pro in.
Cause you're just practicing, right?
Exactly, I've stopped practicing, cause I perfected it.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. Okay, um. After, uh, I, I, you said earlier, by the way, that, uh, you, you drove around the city to at least thirty or forty businesses that were then put up a foreclosure. Um, after the, uh, very unpopular, uh, I guess rebuke by the public to a five hundred dollar, uh, bi-weekly payment. Uh, where it was just dropped to a tenth of that, um, I have not seen any other members of the BBB since. Uh, why, why are you the only one still standing? Why are you not the one in charge? Where, where are they? Actually, that's a better question. Where are they? Do you know?
I do not know.
Okay, because they just all up and left, and I don't know if it's because they're upset that their idea got squashed. But I'm just a little concerned that, uh, people who will be managing all of the businesses within the state are, uh, kind of MIA. How, how are we supposed to rely on them to A, make sure our, our businesses are still in compliance with the, uh, with the constitution? As well as maintaining the fact that we need to have our licenses renewed every two weeks. Um, is it all just going to fall on you squarely, just you?
No, I think it's just sort of a, um, the sort of like unfortunate timing that they, I, I, again, I don't know exactly where they're at. And.
Yeah, see, my concern is, I don't know if it's unfortunate timing or they just stomped their feet and took a break because, you know, people were unhappy.
I haven't been made aware of any complaints or negative, you know.
Okay, well, I, 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 on, on behalf of, I don't know, the business owners that I know, uh, I, I do appreciate at least you staying here and being the rock that we need.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I do go in every day, I, I read the mail, I reply to people, I'm doing everything, so.
Okay, you don't have to sell me on you, you're great, and I'm already praising you, just, I don't know what you, do you want me to buy you a puppy or something, like?
No, I, I have enough dogs.
No, there's too many dogs. It's, we're not running a mill, alright? No, cause the next thing you know, you're like thirty, you start making jackets out of them, you know?
No more Marty's.
Yeah, I already have like sixteen Marty's, so like.
That's, that's a lot. That's too many. You have a problem. Anyhow, uh, that's really all I got. I'm just, I'm just, like I said, I'm just concerned that they're not around, uh, which they should be, you would think, given how much bluster they've had whenever they're here. And, uh, you know, have disrespect with decorum and whatnot, um, anyway.
What I'll say is, you know, even if they do end up not, you know, coming back to the BBB or whatever, I'm still there, so.
Again, appreciate you being the rock.
He's got the director's jawline, I like that.
Hell yeah, hell yeah. That's all I got for you. Thanks.
I appreciate it.
Robert Banner, business owner, Route sixty-eight garage, how are you today? Uh, couple questions, uh, regarding the topic of the BBB and the taxes ensuing. One, why are we getting taxation without representation at this point? Literally, what does the BBB do for businesses? At this time?
Some, some would argue that we're representatives, but, uh, some would argue not, I guess.
Although, you're not setting the tax.
Exactly.
There's also the tax, and also you haven't actually paid any tax yet.
Well, I put the five hundred for my business license and I've already, um, attempted to pay the taxes, but then there was told that, uh, it got pushed off until March, so, yeah. Actually, there's already been money exchanged for something I still see. What, uh, uh, use is the business license at this point when there is no service that the BBB does for business?
I wouldn't say there's no service. I, just this week, I've had five meetings. I'm currently trying to establish the Yellow Jack and get new owners for that. I am helping people determine whether or not they need to register something they're doing as a business. For example, there are people who have some personal lodgings that they would like to lease out, and they have been coming and asking about whether or not they need to make that into a full-fledged business, which the answer is no, you don't.
Uh-huh.
There, there is, like, I am working, I am helping businesses, but yes.
As far, as far as personal lodgings, we, we all know why that can't really, um, that's very reluctant to happen due to zero, zero, three and the way it reads. And the liabilities that it causes the owners of said property. Um, so let's not even go down that road, uh, but.
Regar, regardless, so. Yes, right now, there's not as much that we're doing, which is why taxes have been pushed back. We're currently just trying to get a read on who owns businesses, who doesn't. Having people pay the licensee fee because hey, they want to continue owning a business and running it. And again, a lot of the stuff that we have is going to be coming with the tills, so when those come in, hopefully soon.
So that's, that's still the answer is soon. It, see, this is where.
I know. But, you know, complaining about that to me isn't gonna do anything.
But who do we complain about it to?
It's like complaining about people not coming into the city, same issue.
But, but again, who, who, who do we bring our complaints to except the person that is the face of the BBB?
Well, it's, I would argue that some of the issues are obviously decided above, um, the council member's head, and that would be where to look. Uh, because the BBB is no longer under the office of the mayor, it is a, it is a federal.
It is a federal agency.
Right, but he would be the representative in city of their own.
Hold on, Banner, hold on. The people that you need to be talking to in that regard, at that level, is not here, so that's what I would say. And, and again, Dr. Brown, um, I know the council is grateful, the people that have been interacting with you are grateful that you're still around, um, and I hope you continue to do so. I understand that the frustration, um, of all of this, this capicerean citizen. Um, but Banner, I'm just saying, uh, you, rather you can continue on saying what you were saying, uh, if you have any more questions, but.
Well, I'm just saying.
Make it clear that they are no longer under my office.
I understand, this is.
I can't fix any problem that you were, no, you know, not even here.
This hasn't, I, it totally been directed to you, but my point being is, as the, um, only public face left, as the chief justice here already brought out of the BBB. Uh, how else am I supposed to handle this? Sending messages, get replied to from, by Dr. Gilbert here, so again. That's why I figured this is a good forum for this, uh, discussion.
Well, I guess that's up to Gilbert to decide.
So, you can still bring issues you have to me. I will do my best to bring them up to my bosses to make sure everything gets, you know, addressed. It's, but it has to be something that's reasonable. If you're just complaining about why do we have to wait and how long do we have to wait, that's something that I can't answer. I'll never have that answer.
I see, I see. So, that's, uh, unfortunate.
Like, if I, if I had to come up with my own timeline, of what I think, I would say probably before the end of the month.
Fair enough, fair enough, and I won't even try to hold you to that, because, you know, that's speculation at this point.
Exactly, this is, this is me speculating.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, I, I have nothing else, it's just, uh, irritated and frustrated as I believe a lot of the city is.
Yeah, and I can imagine.
No, trust me, I, I'm frustrated as well.
Banner, you're not the only one, so. Alright, any more questions for the council? No, alright, Councilmember Brown, appreciate you. Alright.
So, a, actual doctor.
Yay, God.
They're both doctors.
Hello, yeah, we're both doctors, he.
But you're actually, you're actually practicing though, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there you go, okay, that's all.
So a doctor of sociology is always practicing in sociology?
Well, I mean, if you're around people, you are, um, if you're out by yourself, not so much.
So I should have a doctorate then?
No, you shouldn't, sir, because did you get a doctorate?
A, a, a doctorate is earned.
You know, oh, you don't think I earned it? Okay, alright, moving on.
Sorry, doctor, please continue.
Yes, hello, um, I'm Dr. Kat, thank you all for being here. Um, I have shared in the filing cabinet, um, Billy Falcon has asked me to bring the flight stuff. Um, so we can review that and go over it again next week when more of the council is available.
Yeah, we don't, I don't want to. Currently, right now, I would have a, pretty much a veto of any bill, and I, I, as, as much as I love power, I don't want that kind of power of a bill. So we will not be voting on any bills while there's only three council members in me.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, if we just vote you out in no confidence, then you'll just be gone and I'm looking to figure things out, so.
That's true, that's true, that's true.
I don't wanna do your job, sir.
That seems a lot of work, but.
I don't wanna do your job, sir.
Mm-hmm.
That's unfortunate.
Damn, so cool.
Alright, so, uh, I guess with that, uh, any questions from the council? Alright, any questions from the people?
I, okay, fine, I'm gonna stand up and speak, no.
I, I, I'm, I'm gonna call on you if you don't, so.
Okay, because I, I. I'm still Benny, by the way.
Oh, great.
Okay, calm down, calm down, Sparky, alright? Let me just speak first, Jesus. Alright, I, as you know, am, uh, have been given the nickname of the Chief Dream Crusher. Uh, there have been ridiculous bills that have been thrown, uh, up to you guys here at the council, and, uh, they have been laughably absurd. Um, and, uh, you know, again, I've been given that nickname of Dream Crusher.
You don't crush my dreams, Benny, it's alright.
Challenge accepted, sir, um.
I fly higher than your dream crusher.
Okay, um. With that being said, I, I have seen the proposed legislation for this flight school and, uh, you know, the, uh, the flight board and whatever, and, uh, this is gonna sound crazy, but it's actually not bad. I, I've seen a lot of the documentation, I've seen enough to satisfy my requirements of what I'd like to see.
Are, are you answering that as a pilot yourself or as a judiciary member?
As, as a judiciary, like, obviously, we know, like, we, I, I would hope everybody understands that, like, wha, while you stand there, you look pretty in your little suit there, and you say that you have veto power, which you do. But I've got the ultimate veto power. Anyway, the point is.
I think the people have that veto power.
No, they do, they do.
Established previously with chief justices that went across the lines with, uh, laws they put in place that got reversed there shortly after the public, uh, well.
Sure, sure.
Didn't agree with it, so I, I think the people have.
Oh, yeah, the wah, that's right, I remember that one.
Yep, so I just wanna make sure about that.
Yeah, so I've seen the documentation, not only for the legislation, which I had issues with, because it felt very much, uh, cart before the horse kinda thing. But now, I've seen the horse, and, uh, I gotta be honest with you, I, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about it. Is that weird? That feels weird to say out loud.
I'd say it's not.
Probably to hear for the rest of you that I actually like something.
Yeah, exactly, I don't really ever see you happy, so.
I, it's not the morphine that I, or the opium that I've, uh, been smoking for when I traveled to the Orient.
I knew you had a thing for horses with all those damn paintings.
Anyway, I'm not on trial.
Uh, no, feel free, the floor's yours.
No, no, no.
Can you two just fuck already?
The, what I'm trying to say is, I, I, I honestly have no actual objections to, to any of the stuff that's actually been proposed, so. I, I guess it's up to you guys now.
There you go, you've got his, uh.
Chief, Chief, Dream Crusher.
Sure.
I would like to, I would like to review it, obviously, and then get enough people here to vote on it.
I know, I guess, sir.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm actually reviewing it right now, um, and since you're right up there, Mr. Chief Justice, um.
Hi, that's me. Hi, hello.
And, you know, Mr. Falcon's there, and Dr. Kat, you're here as well. Um, yeah, so I'm looking at section two, uh, about basically the, that's gonna be built, correct? Um, for the, uh, flight school, yeah?
It, it's called the Saab Bill, correct?
Yeah, Saab, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, um, so, but there's gonna be a, a, basically a.
Just to guess, that's San Andreas Aircraft Board or some shit?
Uh, there would be, there would be some sort of, uh, court system or, 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 or something along those lines for.
I, I, sorry, Chief Justice, sorry to cut you off, I'm sorry. Sir, if you wanna have a comment, please come up to like the rest of us have to do and go to the podium. That would be respectful, please. Now, Chief Justice, I apologize for cutting you off, please continue, sir.
Yeah, so that's a board.
Now, what I'm, what I'm saying is, yes, there would be some sort of court, uh, the way it has been relayed to me, cause I also have spoken to the, to the federal government to make sure, uh, to see sort of what their uh, intentions and vision are with this flight school, and, uh, they have made it very clear that, uh, whenever there is any sort of incident, uh, say, uh, any sort of plane going down, any sort of collision or, or whatnot, that that the pilot's license would be temporarily revoked until there is a hearing to determine the, uh, the factors and all of that.
Okay, so actually, I'm just, uh, going to the initial composition of the board. There's gonna be five members, it looks like there's gonna be the director of the flight school, uh, someone from EMS, hospital fire, somebody from the PD. Somebody from the business community, and somebody appointed by the mayor. Um, however, in two point two, those members must possess, possess some expertise in aviation, law, related fields.
Absolutely.
So are each, each one of them gonna require knowledge of, like, expertise in aviation, or is it or? Like, is it actually an or for all these things?
I personally, my, my opinion, I feel like it should be an and, like, they should have that knowledge, and that was my original issue with the legislation, because how else would you get that without a flight school? Right? So the flight school would have to come first. Uh, I, I did actually press Mr. Falcon for more documentation on that, and I wanted more information on the flight school. Uh, and surprisingly, I got it, and what I've reviewed from it, uh, doesn't look bad at all. Uh, so I, I feel i, if, if it were up to me, which it is not, I would imagine everybody on that, on that board, uh, if they do not have or possess that knowledge, that, uh, the flight school could give them that knowledge.
Okay, so that's the bit I'm kind of, uh, maybe not stuck on, but curious about. It seems like the flight.
I was in the exact same boat when I read it.
Okay, the flight school, it seems like the flight school director will be choosing then the four other people on his board because. Okay, the flight school, it seems like the flight school director will be choosing then the four other people on his board because they choose. They choose who gets trained.
I I don't know if it's I I don't think it's the person who chooses. I don't think it would be the flight school director who chooses to get trained. It would be whoever is in that department, whoever leads that department, for example, like uh say uh EMS, medical and or medical and uh fire. Uh that would be appointed by them.
No, well, if I can very quickly interject.
Doesn't state necessarily who decides who those members are.
If I can very, very, very quickly.
I I hear you, Billy. Hold on. And in section uh section two, two point three, the term of each member shall be three months with the possibility of reappointment. What is the steps for reappointment outside from the appointment of the mayor's position inside the board? But.
That would be a Mr. Falco question to to answer.
And Billy, please, um you can come up to the podium and answer that question.
Sure, so the both the um.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Yeah.
I'm Billy Falco.
Introduce yourself.
Both the of geez, both the uh Police Department and the, you know, uh EMS, Fire, Hospital. Have their own independent means of certifying pilots. So i- it's not just determined by the flights. Um it would be that, you know, they'd be people that were certified potentially, you know, by the hospital to fly or by the Police Department to fly. So it isn't.
What about somebody like Chief Justice that wouldn't wanna fly and the avenue that um they would have no.
Different.
No bear. I know that's different, but contextually, but I just I'm just curious now that he's standing right here, and I know he's reviewing it, and I'm gonna ask him later. Does he feel that as a pilot, he feels that this is overreaching because he is a uh really good pilot? So I wanna find out what he thinks about it as a as a as a member of the flying community. Um but um alright, so that sounds good. I mean, I need to review this some more, but that was one question. So for the mayor's appointment, other than that. There is no.
Oh, yes.
Should they sit in a circle and spin a bottle and be like, oh, you're gonna be the person in the board for the flight uh part?
If if they are playing spin the bottle, would you fly? Would that be considered seven minutes in heaven?
Okay.
Yeah, so the appointment for each role is selected by the Director of the Police, Director of the Flight School, direct, you know, Director of the of the Hospital, et cetera. They're the ones that make the appointment to for their for their spot on the council.
There's no and there's no bar of entry. They just pick a person.
Yeah, they just fit.
It could be like the janitor and they could be like, oh.
It's up to them.
Okay, and then you will give them or the flight school will give them the flight school will give them uh training then for that expertise.
Well, I mean, in theory, they would have received they would have received it through, you know.
Or they got to the board, right?
Yeah, they they would have received it through either through the Fire or through the the uh e- e- or Police.
Yeah, but what about like the mayor's appointment? That's what I'm saying. Like, you know, let's say the mayor appoints me.
Well, you know, that's well, for me, obviously, I'm not gonna appoint someone who doesn't know what you're talking about, but. Well, I mean, let's say you appoint me. But I'm saying where's the checks and balances in the bill where it could stop someone from appointing, let's say, a janitor for the aviation bill or the aviation board that has no idea about. You know, planes or anything.
I mean, ultimately, it there, you know, these are reputable people who are making the choices, so we treat them like adults.
Alright, well, I don't particularly have any more questions on this. I mean, we can go on to part of the next.
And there's the first mistake.
I'll treat them like adults. I don't I don't. But anyway, yeah, that's outside, Mr. Falco.
Alright. At all? I'm sitting there.
Alright, any more uh?
You do your thing.
Alright, do you have anything else to say, Chief Justice, before the next person comes up and speaks? No? Alright. Floor is yours.
Sup, bro? How you doing? I'm Troy Jamison, Lieutenant EMT Echo fifty-five. I have a question about this uh pilot stuff. Is there a chance that we could get pilot licenses to do like? Private tours of Los Santos and San Andreas for people who wanna, you know, spend money to kinda like see the city? And like get like a tour guide situation? I think that'd be really rad.
Yeah, man. Oh, I I'd like to answer. So actually, especially early on, the folk, the priority for for for. For admitting students to the flight school is gonna be people who wanna start businesses with their flight with their pilot's license. So people that wanna give tours, that wanna do cargo, that wanna do, you know, parachuting if we had parachutes. Like they are the first ones that are beginning their pilot licenses because we want to create jobs. We wanna create an economy around flight. So you are one hundred percent focusing on that.
Okay, cuz Dr. Roxy wants to kinda like do a tour guide flight business thing? And uh she was really wanting to know how she can get her pilot's license and how to set up like a tour guide business, you know, and that'd be really cool, man.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you, guys, for answering my question. Love you.
Alright, you're welcome. And just to be clear, the council will not uh be deciding what consumer products are out, just uh trying to move forward and push forward businesses. Any questions or concerns about um from the people on the on the bill itself? Again, um I don't necessarily feel comfortable voting, but um. We haven't talked about the bill itself. We were just talking about the board, right? There's two parts to this, Cat?
Yes, correct.
Alright. Let me just review. Do we wanna talk and review about the second part of this? Uh yes, sir. Why we're why we're discussing this.
Alexander Caidman uh doing alright, doing alright. So um this flight school. Uh is it going to be limited to people who don't have a criminal record of any sort? Or uh is anybody going to be available or have the opportunity to learn how to fly?
It's a good question, Billy. Do you have a?
It will it will be.
Stand up and address this.
Oh, yeah. It'll be decided on a case-by-case basis. Um you know, the you know, the reasons why somebody wants to fly and whatnot. I know I believe, you know, a- as a Christian, I believe that nobody is beyond redemption. So I, you know, I I certainly am not opposed. To somebody with a criminal history, uh you know, getting a license, provided that they understand that any. Any criminal use whatsoever of a flight vehicle could result in uh the most severe of penalties.
Management. Fair enough.
Actually, on to piggyback on you. Thank you, sir, for your uh thank you for coming up to the podium and speaking to everyone. So Billy, on that note. Just like the BBB has obviously regressed on its thoughts on our um transcended its huge tax burden upon the people and the small businesses. Are you then too gonna follow suit and lower the cost of entry for small businesses to get a pilot's license if their business is related to, let's say. And uh uh public good or public entertainment?
Yes, so one of the plans is that a business can get a license. And then any of their pilots that they'd like to train uh will get it at a discounted rate.
The same percentile rate as the BBB has reduced their costs for the tax rate for the people? I mean, surely fifteen thousand dollars for a pilot's license in the city, considering the the amount of students you may or may not have. I mean, you must reconsider that as much as the BBB has reconsidered. Certainly, only have twenty some odd businesses in the city, but they're gonna be renewing shortly.
Do you know how expensive a helicopter is is to maintain?
Well, so is a building and an infrastructure to maintain that.
You don't have to fly a building.
No, but you do have to maintain a building so it doesn't crumble and fall.
Also, do not fly into buildings. That's a life lesson. You just put that write that down if you haven't.
Alright.
Yeah, they used to do that back in June, remember?
What about property to house a helicopter?
So.
In the school?
Wait, what was that?
Yeah, can you go up to the podium so I can hear you? This is so fucking this storm is.
Yeah, I don't know. The storm is really loud. No, I was just asking, uh, do you got plans for like housing it or?
So right now, they're being it'll be kept at airports. In the future, we might be able to look into having like, you know, like. Weasel News can can house their chopper on their helipad. We're not there yet, but right now, right now, it'll it'll be kept at the airport.
Oh, and so like, is that where the school's gonna be? Like, do you have location?
So right now, it's at Gravecity, but the runway is really too short for student uh.
No, it's not.
Fixed-wing pilots. For student, not regular pilots can do it.
Disagreed.
I I.
I can bro it.
Give him a second. I want I want I want to. I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions, too.
Yeah, from a safety perspective, I don't feel comfortable having student fixed-wing pilots landing at Gravecity. So which is which is why I, you know, I put in to the federal government to have it moved to LSIA. Where obviously, there's there's ample space and like you could do the whole training and never and never have to leave the airport.
Alright, well, there you go.
Yeah.
Alright, appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah, when it comes to flight, I like really, really strict about safety.
Well, I mean, as as you should be in striving to, right? I mean, we're talking about being in control of machines that kill can kill people, right?
Right, although.
If it's in the air or on the ground, heck, even underwater.
Can a can a building kill somebody?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Why he lives his plane at Penny's?
Okay.
And deconstruction of a building. So yes, Billy, yes.
Okay, just checking.
I lost my great uncle for building.
There you go.
Hacked him in his sleep.
Um. Okay, actually, Chief Justice, I have a couple of questions about this in relation to this in relation to this. Alright, as I know, um as you have shown me before that you are an avid pilot yourself.
Sure am.
Looking at this bill, do you see any parts of this bill that would um? Let's just say constrain a person that wants to fly and flying or keep someone that shouldn't be flying in the air? Do you feel like this is enough to allow people to fly in the city with that kind of responsibility?
With with the uh have you read the document, the uh the proposed flight school document?
The flight manual? I'm reading because it's huge, but I haven't completed it, no.
Okay, uh I I that was my biggest concern. Uh like the legislation you're looking at is more for the establishment. Of uh of the board overseeing the flight school. My biggest concern, as as Ashley Williams pointed out, uh. Is that we're talking about a flight school without any information on the flight school itself. To me, that's the crux of everything. That's that's the key to everything. Uh the document that I've read about the proposed requirements for the training uh in my opinion seem satisfactory. Uh it 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 very clearly demonstrates or or sorry, it uh aims to teach uh. Basically, all manners of safety regarding whatever aircraft, whether it's a fixed wing or or a helicopter. Um and uh i- it feels like it would be a sufficient uh examination and a test of a pilot's skills.
Alright, but the main crux is we don't actually have a school to teach the pilots in which the board would be governing.
Well, I mean, you gotta have the board first.
You do not. You need the flight.
You do not need to have the board first. You need to have the school.
Like I said, the flight school to me was the was the linchpin in all of this. And once I saw more documentation about the flight school itself and what the uh essentially what the curriculum would be. I I was a lot more convinced that uh may maybe there's something here.
Yeah. Well, um I'm willing to continue like table this because there is there is no flight school. Like, I'm confused on. We give a board, but then without.
This I I my in it it's my belief that this would all uh basically snowball into roughly the same thing. So the there would be a flight school established as well as the board at the same time. Uh but my my hope would be the the flight school does get up and running once the legislation is passed. So that uh you know, then the board can be fully fleshed out with members and and all that other good stuff. Um but uh yeah, as as I've said, the flight school itself is the main priority, in my opinion.
I concur. I concur. Um alright, I appreciate it, Chief Justice.
Put me a board.
Uh council member, uh a doctor, rather, like the.
Just Billy, please.
No, not you, Billy. I said councilwoman, uh.
Yes.
So normally, what happens is any amendments do we have to the bill? I know you presented this for him or represented it. Um so will you be amending any requests and requirements from the council on the bill itself?
Yes.
Alright, so what we can do is like again, I don't I'm willing to vote on this. I just don't wanna vote only knowing that my vote is equal to the entire council. Um so what I would like to do is make the changes. Before we vote on the bill and then in lieu of that vote next week, because we'll vote on this next week. In lieu of that, Billy, I want you to at least start outlining what the flight school, because that's gonna be a very important piece to this whole. Um flight experience, we'll call it.
No, that's already done.
Sorry, well, um if it's already done, why isn't it presented to us?
Oh, I'm the medic. Because the flight school's a private entity. So I mean, we're just establishing the law the law here.
Well, I would like to see, I mean, with the DMV.
I'm I'm happy to show you. I'm happy to show you.
Because with the DMV, they showed me their SOPs and everything. With you, I think you should at least and what they're building out for their driving school if they decide to do that, which they're. Talk there's talks of the driving school getting going. So yeah, show me what you have for that. So at least know that it's not some. Warehouse somewhere out there that you lure people out to fly to the top of buildings in in the city or something, alright?
Wait, he's not dropping people on top of buildings, is he?
No, I was just taking them.
Wait, am I flying warehouses like?
No, you're flying people up from the warehouse to the top of buildings. Um but so yeah, show that.
What's wrong with warehouses? That sounds like discrimination.
Hmm?
Buildings and not people, for the record.
That's true. So let's go ahead and table 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 that till next week. Work on that. Cat, we'll get with you um with the changes. I think that one change uh is very, very important, the and instead of the or in section two. Um I forget exactly. I'm not looking at the document anymore.
Yeah, it's a section two uh two one.
Two one, alright, so.
I'm also, I'm gonna need to edit some of the uh Aviation Flight Manual nine, section nine, consequences of violating violating aviation laws. It's very loose terminology in here. It needs to be tightened up.
Uh I'm I'm happy to it. Uh let's talk, cuz um yeah, we can.
So we'll 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 table this till next week. We'll put a motion up in on uh, you know, well, say right now to make an official motion to table this till the vote till next week. To uh change. A second. Alright, let's just do it. Alright, so motion passed. We'll just we'll vote on it next week. We'll get that done. In lieu of that, Billy, I wanna see the SOPs. Cat, we'll get together and um we can all deliberate over our our get together and decide some of the verbiage for the legislation. And then we'll reach out to the council members, make sure there's enough to where I don't feel like I'm gonna veto vote everything. Alright, so moving on. I guess it's me. Oh, that is unless the uh people have anything else to say. No?
Am I still considered a communist now?
I mean, maybe partly.
I only agreed so you guys wouldn't impeach me.
What? Well, I mean.
That's that's I'm kidding. That's that's not a thing. Go on.
Savannah, what have you done to this man?
I also can't. I you can't. I'm not afraid of impeachment. Come at me, bro.
Well, uh you know, uh we have we have a pact.
Oh, you can't. Oh, weird. That's so crazy. That's so odd.
Alright, I gave you time to speak. I gave you guys to speak.
I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Zip it, please.
Zip.
And I said I said, please. Uh Chase Reeve, Mayor Chase Reeve. Uh I'll make this quick because we don't really have much to talk about other than what we've already been discussing. Um I have talked to at least I'm a I'm. And correct if I'm wrong, Chief Justice, the last bills that passed the uh legislation, yes, last week, the SSP bill is pressed to get into the Constitution. Um so it'll pass the judiciary um this week uh with the news of the elections. Definitely, we're gonna hold off on. Uh any any votes, I feel, for no confidence. I'll do a review of the attendance to make sure who's still around. But as it stands, yes, we'll have uh what is it, three, three or four uh election seats up or seats up for election in the next couple of weeks. Um I haven't had a chance to move any move the grant in further any anymore. I haven't had a chance to talk to the uh the main funder of the grant. But um on that note, I still will be looking at using the grant system to uh bring money to the city for events and stuff like that. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to say. Um does the council have any questions for me?
Actually, yeah, when is your term up?
Oh, God, hopefully soon. Uh.
Wow.
Jesus, sir.
No.
Sir, I voted for you.
Yeah, so did I.
Uh no, no, it's it's eight months. Eight months is I I appreciate this as as mayor. I do love it. Um but uh if the Chief Justice is sitting here saying how much he loves it, then you gotta believe how much I love it, um which I do. Um I just, you know, I think I've done a lot for the city. Well, I don't think. I know. I know. Um, I just, you know, I think I've done a lot for the city. Well, I don't think, I know, I know. No, not at all, not at all, not at all, I, you know, I just, I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to help you guys out, and I'll be here till the end. That's, uh, that's it.
The end, wow, okay, so when is the end?
The end of what specifically?
The end, whenever the end of my term is, the end of whatever, the end of you needing my help, the end.
Do you know something we don't know, sir?
Uh, oh, wait, let me say this, because, do, does the council have any questions for me?
Yeah, I literally just asked you one, when's the end of your fucking term?
So, I told you, I don't know, I, yeah, I don't know, I think it's, uh, soon, we have to look at the books, two months, maybe?
It's like two months.
Two months, yeah. So there you go, your seat will be open and ready for you in two months. It's ready for you. Alright, uh, any more questions?
When you, yeah, I got one more question, sir. Um, so, when you saw the advertisements for the meteor, were you hoping it was an actual?
No, but you know what? That was the most ingenious campaign, because part of me did think it was, and then when it wasn't, I was just as shocked as I would have been if it was, so it was, it was pretty clever.
Not to dismay.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping, I was hoping for an actual meteor, sir.
Well.
I was rather disappointed, it's good.
There was a lot of people getting sucked up down.
Okay, that's all your questions.
Do we really want Neil, do we really want Neilists on our council?
Wait, 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 you know, so clearly, wait, I want you guys to be able to answer me. I want you guys to ask me questions, but I wanna be sure the council's done. The council, do you have any questions for me? No, no, alright, so open up to the people, ask away, everybody's got questions, hopefully, none now.
Yeah, actually, I do, hey, I'm Huddy, everybody calls me Huddy, I'm that guy. What does the mayor actually do?
Uh, well, runs, runs this council meeting. Before I was mayor, this council wasn't even a, ran it all. So that's one thing, chief legislative body in the, in the city, so, uh, p- preferably, I prefer, I won't say that I've pushed the most legislation that has passed and made to the constitution, but it's damn near close, if not me, uh, at the top. So that'd be one thing. I'm a pusher of legislation, I deal in legislation.
Yeah, I was just curious what your, uh,
No, please do, please.
What your authority is, and like, what you specifically oversee, what are your duties, what are your powers, like?
Well, most of it you see right here. Yeah, the council.
Okay.
Are you interested in, is that what you're asking?
No, I'm just, yeah, I was just curious, honestly.
I'm ready, go!
No, no.
Yeah, yeah. There you go, there you go. So, when I was, when I was told, when I, when I got elected, the ex-mayor, Joy, said, your main job is telling everyone no, that's your job.
That's my job.
You know, oh, well, you know, hey, there, hey, there you go, so.
Yeah, that was weird.
Yeah, that is weird. So, you, uh, so, that's what she told me, and then I made it kind of my mission to not say no to, you know, everything, but say no to stuff that's reasonably ridiculous, right? And some of it has got to the Chief Justice, and that's his job to say no to that, right? So, um, that's part of my job, when, um, the city gets a lot of money, obviously, when they have funds, uh, you know, hold and take care of, you know, it'll be fishing game, if they have, you know, if we ever get that established, or the parks and rec. Um, so just run City Hall, I mean, City Hall's five, is it five divisions of people? Maybe four, four separate departments, but I don't run any of them, but, I mean, it's basically listening to people, figuring out, I'll put it, put it this, logistics, somebody wants something, wants a law passed to figure out how to put a school together, put a fire, you know, they, did they pass this, um, while it's here though, but, um, put a fire department together, like, logistically, how are we gonna do that? And then talk to Chief Justice, or talk to, I don't think Chief Justice, so I don't think you were Chief Justice when that was getting passed, um, for, you know.
Alright, I get it, I get the gist of it, yeah, I get the gist of it. Alright, I was just curious, thank you for, uh, answering, appreciate it.
Yeah, don't, don't, just don't, when you run, don't say no to everyone, I'll say that.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm not.
That's my job, I say no to everyone.
I look forward to seeing you on the ballot.
Hey, we didn't do the pledge release.
Huddy for mayor.
John Huddy.
Yeah, David, there you go, David.
Everybody write it in.
Oh, god, no.
Give them a choice, force them into it.
Actually, should we just like get rid of the mayor right now? I mean, the three of us can do it, we can do it right now.
I mean, I would love this.
Second, who's the, what's the mayor's name again? That's right. Is that paramedic, paramedic one in that here?
Yes, it is.
EMS zero?
Leaving, see you guys.
Alright, appreciate you.
Your service will find you.
And if no one has any other questions for me, does, this floor is open for anyone, we have five minutes, does anyone like to say anything about anything?
Time to whoop some ass, see you later.
Uh, we'll probably see I O, Tequila La, probably see, uh, anyways, so, anybody have, okay, there we go, alright. You got five minutes, that's good.
Yeah, I gotta change my. Hey, guys, uh, Troy Jamison, Fight Night is at Tequila La at four o'clock.
Troy, you're the fucking champ.
Come watch Ace defend his championship against whoever's brave enough to step into the ring with him, hell yeah.
I, I accept the challenge.
Let's see who you gotta fight.
Anyone else wanna come up to the podium here and talk?
I need, I need the Chief Justice to come up for a second.
Alright, Chief Justice, you mind? Council would like you to speak.
Fucking A.
Yeah, I'm excited.
See you, sleep. Hey, it's a sleep, alright, fine.
Poke, poke bin.
Anyone else like to say anything? Um, I hear screaming, so definitely, or yelling, it's a different. Say it so I can hear.
Lifeline.
Yeah, man, he trains all of us now at the hospital. Hey, excuse me, if you guys are gonna have a conversation, please wait till afterwards, if not, we'd like to close this out. Anyone, anyone else like to say anything at the podium before we close this meeting out? No, alright, meeting adjourned.
Gavel, gavel.
Let's fucking go.
Tequila La now, man.
Wouldn't it?
Let's go.
Starting right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds great.
Just gonna hop over.
Yep.
Where'd you go? Oh, shit.
God, thanks, I keep getting hung up on things.
I'm gonna look for him.
Yes, no, you're not, to see you, oh.
I thought he was helping out.
What do you know that I don't? Are you killing me? Are you poisoning me?
Fight night, and then punk, had the dendron collar.
I mean, yeah, you're right, I like surprises.
Yeah, exactly.